First fifteen minutes of public comment. Anybody who wants to come forward and say anything? There are nothing? Okay. Cool meeting minutes, June, July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
July twenty ninth, two thousand seventeen, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
August ninth, two thousand seventeen, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Want me to read the, uh, more?
I move that we approve the warrants for period covering July twentieth, two thousand seventeen, or August sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, including payroll's warrant for the town FY eighteen, four, five, and six, and seven. Payroll warrant FY eighteen, two, and three. Sewer enterprise warrant FY eighteen, SE, four, five, and six. School warrant FY eighteen, S one and two, and municipal light plant warrant FY eighteen, number three and four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Scanlon, why don't you come up?
We're gonna get him out of here so early.
John Scanlon from DCR, and, uh, update on the recycle center.
So, um, as you know, this is our twice annual update to the board. Um, cycle, the recycle center continues to run very well, extremely busy. Um, they are, uh, open, uh, four days, three regular days a week and, and one Saturday a month. Um, they did, this past winter, make a change to hours so that, that their evening hours in December, January, February, they're, they're not open. Try to be a little nicer to all the volunteers, to not be out there in the dark and freezing cold. But the, the, uh, instead, what they, in those three months, what they did was open a second Saturday morning. Um, and so they'll, they'll repeat that again this winter as well, um, to be open those hours. Um, they did move their Monday open hours evening to a Thursday evening to make it easier. It's a very busy, um, night for them, and usually volunteers are there when it was Mondays, and they opened again Tuesday morning, and they found themselves there late on Monday, being ready for Tuesday. So, they moved that to Thursday, which gave them a free day on Friday, um, to get work done, um, to be ready for, for the next open hour. The, uh, they've had a few issues within the building itself with patrons, um, pushy patrons, um, unfortunately. They have had to, uh, prohibit a couple people from being in the building due to their, their actions, but, uh, otherwise, things are, are running very well. They are in discussions about hiring a, a part-time manager, uh, because the place is so busy and a lot of, a lot of energy goes into, um, you know, all volunteer, because into negotiating contracts to try to keep costs for disposal of items, um, as low as possible. So, um, doing those things, dealing with, with, um, you know, issues on the site, um, they are moving towards trying to hire a part-time manager probably this fall, so. Um, and then, the only other thing is the, the budget for next fiscal year, um, they will start working on their budget and, and the processes. They do a meeting with the town representatives in November, so they will prepare to do that for November in order to have a draft budget, um, to the municipalities in advance of your budget planning.
So the, um, so I'm just looking at the website, so this is, this is correct, so it's Tuesday nine AM to eleven AM.
Yeah.
Wednesday, two thirty PM to four thirty PM.
Yeah.
Now it's Thursday, five to seven?
Yeah.
And still every third Saturday from eight to eleven.
They did last year add a number of extra Saturdays, um, for, um, couple, they, they tried and I think will repeat again, um, in eighteen, two Saturdays of just hazardous product collection, because those are very busy days, seemed to go very well. So they will, um, do that and remain at six, um, for, for eighteen, six hazardous product collections. Uh, they did add a couple Saturdays, I think also when they were doing, uh-
Shredding?
Shredding, yeah. They did a number, I think it was four shredding events, or five possibly in, in seventeen, so. Popular, I guess, a lot of it.
Do they see an increase in any particular area that people-
I don't think it's a, I, I think it's just an increase in general.
Okay.
They're seeing, seeing a lot, you know, just continued, you know, increase in numbers of people using the, the place.
Thank you.
But it's still, no more towns have been added?
Nope. Same as it's been, seven towns. And that's-
They check those, they check the IDs.
Yeah, I know. IDs are checked, yeah. They check IDs at, that, when people come in.
Just sort of public knowledge, what can't they bring there? I mean, obviously, like, household items and stuff like that, like, uh, furniture?
Yeah, they do take, they do take furniture. Uh, some of it gets, you know-
Recycled.
-recycled. If it's not in good shape, then it's, it's disposed of, but-
I think the answer is pretty much, you can bring pretty much anything.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty short list, so what you can't bring, but-
I don't even know what they-
They have a good-
I can't even think of any, but, I, yeah.
I mean, that was a stumping me question. I couldn't think of anything off the top of my head, but, pretty extensive.
Can I make questions?
If I can ask a question outside of the recycling center?
Sure.
There was, there was an issue, I believe, with poison ivy on the sidewalk across the reservoir, is that where we talked about it at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, at the bridge.
At the bridge.
Yeah, do you know any, I guess you don't know anything about it.
You know, we did-
We had talked about it.
As part of that project, um, the drainage project in the road, we did, we did make sure that the, the, a new sidewalk got in, got put in over the causeway, and the decision was, because that actually is not our property, so there was, if you remember, but there was conversation about who maintains that. So ultimately, the design paved that whole strip so that there wasn't a two-foot weedy strip left on the causeway, but, um, there isn't, I mean, the, along the sidewalks, the sidewalks are in highway right of way. So we did, um, we did a couple years ago, if you come back in this direction towards the sewer pump station, we took our fences down that were close to the, well, at that point, it wasn't much of a sidewalk, but sidewalk now, just to, so that it could be mowed, um, if, if the highway department was bringing, not yours, because that stretches DOT, but if the highway department was bringing a mower down there, then our fences would be out of the way. But I'm not sure where you have, where there's a poison ivy.
Do you recall where this, this was? We talked about it.
Your office, right, you go all the way down, connects the Route twelve, uh, the main street, not, not main street?
Yeah.
There is a bridge walkway. There is a bridge walkway. So that's the sidewalk, they are saying.
Yeah, and sidewalks not-
Who maintains the sidewalk on that bridge?
Um, that is all town road. I think one forty is a, I think one forty in that stretch, but I'm not positive, you'd have to check. I think one forty, forty in that stretch is a town-maintained road.
Couple of years back, you know, it was going back and forth, it's town, Mass DOT, DCR.
Well, I know the sidewalks are not DCR, I know that for sure. And I thought that stretch of, of one forty, and it's hard because all over the state, doesn't matter whether it's a town-numbered road, it varies widely as to whether it's state-maintained or, or individual town-maintained. I'm pretty sure that the town plows one forty in that stretch. That's my recollection.
Yeah, we'll have to, Anita, if we can put, when Representative O'Day may be in advance, when we went to a few of those meetings, Representative O'Day and myself asked about who was gonna maintain it, and there was a gentleman there from Mass DOT, I believe, and I think he made the mistake of saying that, oh, we do shovel some, some roads.
Yeah, that, I think, Chris, that was-
He was quiet right there.
That was a conversation about Route twelve, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I think Representative O'Day might still be looking into that, so maybe we, at that meeting, or in advance, ask him, um, if, if he's got any further, because I know he went back and forth with them about-
I think he did, yeah, I do remember.
So the poison ivy issue is, is not yours?
Not ours.
Do you have a spray program for poison ivy at all around there?
We don't know.
Nothing?
No.
DCR doesn't kill anything.
Except all the trees, to put drainage in. So the other side of the drainage project, is that, I know it's underway, but they haven't come into the street yet, right?
Which, uh, down-
Towards Boylston.
Down going towards Boylston.
So they knocked down all the trees?
I think, I think they're just moving down there now-
Okay.
-to start the-
Possibly the road might stop being-
Yeah, I think so. I think they, they're sort of, they've sort of had the bulk of the stuff over on, um, Beaman Street done, so I think, um, they've moved most of their equipment down the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Any else?
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, Shannon Watson requests for common FIC license for open, to open live love nutrition, seventy-sixth Central Street. Come on up. Bring your chair with you if you want.
You gotta take one from the end. There you go.
Free advertising, so do we?
There's a couple here.
Oh, is there?
Yep. We can share this one, we're good.
Would you tell us a little bit about yourself and what you wanna do and?
Can we start?
Yeah?
Yes, please. Okay, so, um, we would like to bring, um, a healthy, active community to West Boylston, so we would like to open, um, a shake shop, a nutrition club, which would be, um, people could come in and get healthy teas, um, and shakes, like protein shakes, um, that include about twenty-four grams of protein, uh, twenty-one essential vitamins and minerals, um, and we also run, uh, fit camps where we, uh, would put out to the public that we're running, um, you know, a fit camp where people are invited to come work out with us. Um, we don't, we're not trainers or anything, but we encourage people to come for a run with us, or do a little bit of working out, um, and we would like it to be, you know, family-based, kid-friendly, um, so people can come in with their families and basically be, um, good role models to their children. Shannon was actually one of my clients, um, who started with me, uh, a couple months back, um, and she's down fifty-five pounds, um, and just seeing people gain confidence and stuff like that. We will also do, um, like, weight loss challenges where people can come in and sign up, they can come in and get their measurements taken, um, get their weight done, and then basically come in, check in, week to week, um, we would, you know, put out healthy meal suggestions, um, that they can do at home, come up with, like, nutrition plans for them that they can bring home and do at home, um, and that's kinda-
And we also, you know, we, I've talked to Carl, the personal trainer, who will be next door, um, and we're collaborating with him, he'll send people over to us, vice-versa. Um, he's great, we've met Paige at Darby's, um, we're gonna actually use the bakery as, like, special, sometimes putting, like, their cookie crumbles on top of our shakes, um, and they're very excited, actually, Paige has been drinking shakes for years, which was nice to know. Um, we have yet to meet, I think it's Diane Kelly, the dance studio, but one of her employees is actually part of the company, who's been drinking shakes. And for me, it's about, you know, health, like she said, I've lost fifty-five pounds. It's very hard nowadays, as a stay-at-home mom, to be able to go and do something healthy with your children, um, and this has given me the opportunity to do so. We will have a children's area in there, um, you know, just so the parents can sit down and relax, um, while their children are having fun. We're gonna do a, um, sensory wall with, like, pipes, like, uh, PC, what is it, PC pipes, or?
Yeah, with the balls.
PVC. PVC, I don't know. Um, so that's our plan, um, we're really, really excited, um, everyone in West Will has been, West Boylston has been very, very nice and welcoming, so we're hoping it's something that-
Wanted to tell us your hours?
Our hours will be, Monday through Wednesday will be seven to four, Thursday and Friday will be seven to six, and then Saturday and Sunday will be seven to twelve.
Do you have any outside seating planned, or just inside?
Um, just inside. I mean, the fit camps right now, I run, uh, Ashley and I run a fit camp in, um, Millbury, and then in Holden on Trump Brook Reservation, um, every Saturday and Sunday at eight AM, people just go there to meet and work out together. So, but we don't plan on doing anything outside, um-
Our building?
No, it'll be all inside, um, yeah.
Questions? Yeah, I know you just got here.
What can I say? Can you introduce yourselves and tell us why you picked West Boylston for this?
I don't know, I'll come to the top. Um, my name's Aaron Watson, I'm a lucky husband, I'm just living to my right, and, um, I guess why we picked this place is, you know, I mean, everybody wants to have, like, you know, the white picket fence, you know, the American dream, everybody wants that, but it ain't easy. And, uh, you know, for a long time, people say, like, you know, you wanna, you wanna wait to have kids, you know, you wanna wait to buy your house, you know, you wanna make sure you're comfortable before you do these things, and, you know, we've learned through life in a hard way that it just doesn't work like that. There's never a perfect moment to have kids, a perfect moment to, you know, start a business or to, you know, raise a family, and, you know, we were looking for a place to live, and, and it wasn't helped this way, um, it just happened to push us this way, and we, uh, originally, were looking at West Boylston, where to relocate, we liked the area, and it wasn't too far from where we wanted to be, um, but there just wasn't anything available. I guess people hold on to their properties around here, and, so, uh, so we ended up in Holden, uh, so right next door, um, you know, so we bought a house on Lola Drive within Holden, and we just loved the area, uh, so, you know, when we were looking at a place to open a business, we wanted to open someplace small, we could very easily open, you know, a nutrition club that might have more traffic in a Worcester or Limminster or someplace like that, but that's not what we're about, we're about our community from where we are, and we, we wanna be part of the communities that we're, you know, residing in, so that's why we're here.
Okay, I'm Shannon Watson, um, obviously, I live with him, so he gets it. It's just, I, I like the feel, everyone is so very nice, like I said, um, you know, we've been working in there, and people just come in, introduce themselves, it's just the homey feel, the family atmosphere, and I'm really all about, um, I've been doing charity work for years, I'm all about community, helping out, um, and that's, that's why I'm here in West Boylston, so.
Yeah, and, um, I'm Ashley Fisher Allen, and, um, West Boylston to me just seems like a homey town, um, I love that the reservoir's right there, I like outdoorsy things, I've always been an outdoorsy, sporty, you know, played every single sport, um, and I like all the trails and all that kind of stuff, so being able to incorporate that into our nutrition club, um, is huge for me. The city and stuff, like he said, you know, we could've done a Worcester type of thing, um, that isn't the clientele that we really wanted to bring in, we wanted to bring in families and kids and, you know, make it, so on Sunday mornings, you know, the kids are waiting all week for Sunday morning to go down to the nutrition club to get their special shake and, um, make it like, kind of something that they, they do every weekend and stuff like that, so, um, for me, it just was the perfect location, and when we, when we went to, to look at the spot, we, like, instantly knew, like, you know, this is it, so.
Can I just add something too? We do love your motto, too, the small-town, big work.
Yes, that's huge.
That will also be in our shop, a map of West Boylston with a heart, so.
If you don't mind us stealing.
Do you have any other stores, or only here? Any other place? Do you have any other stores?
Oh, no.
No.
No, we do not. Um, there are other nutrition clubs in Worcester, there's one in Auburn, but this will be the only one that is for us.
When do you hope to open?
Well, we just spoke to Mike, um, and we would like to do a soft opening Labor Day weekend with just friends and family, um, and our, we would like to do a grand opening, um, September sixteenth, where we would have some live acoustic music from local talent, um, and also face painting for the kids and stuff.
I like, I like the idea of a big ribbon, big says what's next.
But that's, that's our plan, um, we did speak to Mike, I've been in contact, contact with him, um, and we have a couple more things to do, and then he's, said he'll be ready to inspect it, so.
Do you have a website, address?
No. We would do a Facebook page, but I don't believe we're gonna have a website.
Okay. I just wanted you to say it if you had, that's all.
Should we contact the, what, Shane performance, they'll sell a ribbon coming forward?
Oh, really? Oh, great, thank you.
And she's out of Holden.
Really? Great, swap?
Yeah, so let's contact them.
Just circling back, I mean, I wasn't sure if part of that question was just to get to know us, you know, a little bit more, um, if you don't mind, I can indulge on that a little.
I'm sorry, we don't have all night.
I said a little, it's fine. But, uh, it's so, you know, years ago, me and my wife, obviously, you know, fell in love, got married, our five-year anniversary should be right around that, soft opening in early September, so, uh, but, you know, we, we wanted to have family more than anything. We, we, we settled down for that reason, and, and we found out that we, you know, couldn't have children naturally, we had to go through, through IGF, um, sort of, through a lot of infertility treatments, we spent a ton of money, I sold all my stuff, a bunch of cool memorabilia, had to sell all that, ice car, goodbye car, you know, but you do that to sacrifice for your family, and, you know, lucky enough for us, we scraped, didn't gather enough money, even though we had failed attempts to, you know, throw benefits, you know, just to raise money from our friends and family that came around us, and we were able to have our son, um, Finley, who's very healthy now, um, and we actually now have two boys, you know, and it was a tough road, but actually also for herself, same situation where they had to go through fertility treatments in order to have their kid. So, we have three sons under three, all through very trying circumstances to make a family, and, you know, we didn't, we didn't give up, and, you know, we're not gonna give up on, you know, this business, and we like to help other people achieve their goals. Personally, like, this one picture, I'm almost a hundred pounds more than I am, and that's, and she's lost, like, over sixty herself, and, you know, there's many things that you can be, you know, for my wife, I love her for every reason, regardless of what it is, but there's, I, I, I think it's, you know, it's important for me to say that I'm very proud of my wife, I've never been really proud of her, and proud of her of what she's done and, and been able to accomplish in such a short period of time, taking on this nutrition aspect. She's gotten me healthier, she's gotten, you know, just numerous amounts of friends and family members that we know, like, that have just changed their lives because of this, you know, so it really started as just a small thing, and now it's just kinda taken on, and the reward that we get for helping other people, um, you know, hopefully that kinda transcends on to others, and, uh, we also do really like giving back, so when it comes to those things, like, in the community, like, if anybody ever wanted to hang up a flyer for a five K race that supports somebody locally for any sort of thing, we're all about that, because people did it for us, they bent over backwards to help our dreams come true, we want reciprocate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you guys so much. Have a great night.
And I love your T-shirts.
Oh, we'll have them for sale.
Okay.
For you guys, we'll give you a discount.
Have a great evening.
Goodnight, you too.
All right.
Yeah, no, you can leave, you don't have to stay.
We will, we will have ones with the logo on the back, so.
Oh, okay.
We'll get it approved.
Thank you.
So we'll put, uh, John Saraci, hopefully comes at seven forty.
Yeah, he said, I told him seven thirty, because that's what it is.
All right, consider approving the following production assistant hiring for WBPATV additionally conditional upon pre-employment physicals at grade two, Shannon McNairy and Benjamin Simran.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, recognize the acceptance of the following donations from the banstand committee in, to approve expenditures to these funds of a general purpose. Two ninety-three from Sandra Cambersini for the sale of a bench, two seventy-three thirty-three in free will donations from July sixteenth concert, one forty-four seventy-six in free will donations from July twenty-third concert, one seventy-seven seventy in free will donations from July thirty-first concert, and one ninety-nine in free will donations from August sixth concert.
Make the motion to approve acceptance?
Second.
Quick question. Anybody know where two hundred and ninety-three dollars comes from for the sale of a bench? Why is it at, you know, three hundred or around number? Just curious.
Okay.
I made a motion, anybody second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Considering voting permanent prospect, will the intersection change?
All right, so we had made the, um, changes to the intersection, we created the four-way stop at the intersection, and we also made that leg section behind the island one-way heading toward Worcester, and the board had determined that we would leave it there for six months before voting as a permanent change, so we're bringing it back before the board tonight to determine if you wanna make that be a permanent change, so that we can finish the paving and the other work that needs to be done.
Is there any accidents after that intersection?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Nobody complained, right?
Yeah.
I think it's worked unbelievably, so much better than it had.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve making it permanent.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I just do have a question, do we have, um, any information from the chief on his thoughts on it?
It's not my question.
They're recommending.
They're recommending, okay, thank you.
So, Anita, will they extend, extend the grass area now?
Yes, so that's where we'll, you know, if you recall, the, um, we've reduced the width of the roadway that's behind the island.
Right.
So that will mean that we'll be filling it in, grassing it, and, you know, making that more aesthetically pleasing.
Oh, you have plenty of room.
Yeah, at a very good price.
All right, immediate motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Review of draft action, uh, item template for FY eighteen goals for the board selection and town administrator.
Do you want me to, uh, for this?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, several weeks ago, um, the board met, um, in a retreat workshop at Holy Cross to review a, a long list of suggested goals to be considered for action items for FY eighteen, and, um, after a lot of discussion, the board came up with basically three goals for the year, um, large goals that, that you wish to work on, and the first one being, um, improving permitting process for businesses, new and existing, to enhance economic development within the community. Uh, the second goal is to establish a, a formal town beautification program, which, um, would include establishing a light bylaw, um, and looking to do other possible, um, beautification projects, and then the third, um, was to do a, a citizen and employee customer satisfaction survey. This is a carryover goal from the previous year. The, the fourth item, um, we had talked about whether or not each team made it, an official goal or not, still included it on the, on the list, and that is to try again to do a Tiffany Drive RFP for the parcel B, um, that's under the control of the board selection. So, on this draft, um, goals and objectives worksheet, Nancy and I have worked to try to put together some action steps and potential due dates for those, and I don't think we need to take time to look at these and talk about them in detail tonight, but what I would ask the board is that you do look at this over the next few weeks and, you know, provide any edits, um, that you wanna see made to this document, so that we can pull together a more formalized final version that you can vote on at your next meeting.
Any questions about that?
No? It's good, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, John Saraci, Eagle Skull Project, World Trade Center, East Pennant, come on up, John.
Both come up.
You can just take a seat right at the table there.
Just introduce yourself and then, and go ahead.
All right. That's fine, you don't even have to worry about the mic, it'll pick you up. All right. Hi, I'm John Saraci, I am seventeen years old, I go to Azabeth Valley Regional Technical High School, and I am working toward getting my Eagle rank for Boy Scouts, and today I am here proposing my project, which is the construction and installation of a nine, a nine eleven memorial for the town hall. Now, what is important is the benefit that this memorial will have for the town. Hopefully, when people view the memorial, they will reflect on that day and appreciate those who lost their lives and the first responders. Now, fortunately, my school, Azabeth Valley, will provide the materials and labor necessary so that we don't have to worry about the fundraising. And the following presentation will be a overview of my project, and I have printed out a handout.
Do you all have the handouts?
Yeah, we have the, um, I don't have mine, I left it at home, but we can, um, we'll get that to the board, we'll make copies of it.
All right.
And just to, just to update, um, myself and Mr. Hadley met with the gentleman, and he showed us the plans, um, and the plan is to put it at the entrance to the town hall inside the building.
the building, possibly over to the corner there, to the right, as you went to the main hall. I think there's some chairs there now.
The eyeglass bins, sort of?
Yeah, there's a little table and a couple chairs there now.
So as you're walking in door two, it would be right in front of you, to the right-hand side, basically, near the window.
Yeah, so I think somewhere, I don't know if we talked about a corner unit or a wall unit, we haven't, you haven't really decided that.
Well, we left it open, but we think we're leaning towards welding it before.
Okay, so a wall. And then, one thing that we asked the gentleman is that instead of welding the piece of metal that we have from the World Trade Center onto it, maybe some, Mr. Hadley, some type of bracket system?
Yeah.
That it goes in, and then that maybe gets welded, but if someday down the road, somebody wants to remove it, it won't be welded.
Yeah.
So we're going to look into that when Azabeth opens again, and you can talk to the metal fab teacher.
And we'll get the pictures, and we'll get the rest in the board.
Get it out, yeah, right. So, I don't know if anybody here, I think we're on track, I think we need to sign something for, for the, for the project itself. So here, and, yeah, okay.
Questions, good.
So why did you pick this project for your Eagle Scout?
Because there was a scout prior to me that I'd already planned it out, but decided to quit because they had J O D C that they had been occupied with. So I just took it up.
Okay, and what interest do you have in this project?
Well, I just figured that, I just figured that right now I have all the materials necessary, and it's really interesting, so I just wanted...
Do you live in town?
Yes, I do.
And have you grown up in town?
Yes, I have.
That's very nice that you're giving back to the town.
All seventeen years.
All seventeen years, huh? That's a good thing. So are you going in, are you going in to be a senior?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do you have any plans for after?
Maybe community college, and then going to college right after.
Good for you. Thank you for taking this project on.
No problem.
Do you have a timeframe for completion?
Possibly by the end of this fall.
At this point, we're waiting for, you know, Azabeth to open again, obviously, and then he's going to go over some, tighten up the plans, and then maybe we'll meet again and look at the plans, and we can bring something back to the board at that time.
Yes. He has to present to the Boy Scout Committee for approval, and once that happens, I think construction matters.
Is this going to be inside a closed and closed thing, or it's open?
The metal pad, I think, will be open to the year, but it will be bolted into place, bolted onto the project.
Oh, okay, no glass outside containment?
I don't think that's the plan, right? No, that's something we want to add, that's something we need to discuss.
So...
No, we don't think we talked about any glass.
Yeah, but when the metal is exposed to the weather, you know?
It's going to be inside the building.
Inside the building.
Still, you know, the door is opening and closing. Maybe later on, we could add on it, you know?
We can, we can talk to the metal fab and see what his thoughts are.
So, the door is outside door, right? When they open it, the cold air comes in, so during the winter times and other things. So the metal, it's a iron metal, right, so it could be rusted.
It's all rusted up, that you have to keep the original tin in it.
Yes, it could be rusted.
Right. So you're probably into Thanksgiving or something like that?
Either in a plexiglass or sunglass, then closer will be good.
We can talk to the, the gentleman at Azabeth, I guess, has an interest in this project too. I believe his father and his grandfather?
Father and his uncle.
His father and his uncle worked in the World Trade Center.
Were, they were metalworkers?
Yes.
That worked on the World Trade Center.
There's a picture in the presentation of him standing on top of it under construction.
Oh, right. And then, I think we're just going to have to, we talked about some type of wording of what we're going to write.
Yeah.
We can talk about that maybe with the town administrator to get what we want to...
Yeah, that would, that would not be done until the town approved it.
Yeah.
His next step is to go to the Boy Scout Board for approval, get the signatures from you, and then bring that to the Boy Scouts.
Okay. If you want me to sign this?
I think, you know, as, when the project's nearing completion, it'd be important to coordinate with the police department, the fire department, to get them involved in the unveiling of the monument. Obviously, they have, they know people, it's there. The first responders are very interested in it, I think, and even the American Legion would probably be interested in sending representatives, so that it can be a big thing.
We can assist with that, you know, we can assist with that.
I'm in the American Legion, so I can...
Get that part done.
There you go.
So we can, okay this project to go forward.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to sign?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much for coming.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we all need to sign a credit certificate?
No, just, yeah. All right, now we're going to talk about a favorite subject, donation bins.
What about those?
Wow.
Siobhan, you don't have anything to say about them?
I think I've been talking to Mr. Hadley just about every day lately.
Thanks very much for coming, thank you. Did a great job.
Appreciate it.
I would, I would like us to reconsider the donation bin, at least, down at Walmart. I did call Mr. Hadley early Monday morning, and I drove by, and yesterday, maybe they cleaned it up, and then today I drove by again, and there's furniture outside. I think it's a real eyesore, and I haven't seen a lot of other problems, and I don't, that one right on Route twelve says a lot about our area. So, I think we should reconsider or speak to, I think we've spoken enough, and I think you've made plenty of phone calls, and honestly, I think you have other things to do with your time that would be more as, as important, but used in a better timeframe. So, I'm proposing that we get those particular ones removed as soon as possible.
Well, I'm not sure if we have a policy and everything, we'd have to look into changing the policy to have them, we've given them a license, so I, I mean, I know that, I agree that we need to do something, and we've talked about it before, but do we need to change the policy to have some type of...
They're in violation.
Well, I don't know if the policy says...
Sure, what you could do is you could invite the license holder in, ask the licensing authority, and have a discussion about the conditions and the ongoing challenges they've been facing. And at that time, you are the licensing authority, you could revoke the permits.
Okay.
Does it require inviting them in for a hearing, so to speak? It, it's a courtesy that we would give them, as we would give any business. We would not just revoke a license, we would have them come in, and if they are aware, I've been sending them emails, I sent them photos, so...
So, but they didn't clean it, right? From last Monday?
They do clean it every day.
They continue to clean, and somebody continues...
It's a thumbing ground, they clean it every day.
Is there a, is there a camera at the Bank of America?
I...
Should be at some camera, right?
That's up to the property owner.
Property owner, yeah.
The property owner's the one that's taking the brunt of the thing, and for what they wanted there in the first place, it's beyond me, but...
As you said, it's a junkyard there.
So, schedule it for our next selectman's meeting, and we'll ask them to come in, and then we'll, because we can't find them, we can't do anything like that, we don't have the power to do that.
But we could terminate it without them coming in.
No, we need to invite them in, she said.
Do they have to come in, Nancy? It's up to us to invite them in.
Typically, we have not revoked a permit without inviting the holder of the permit in.
But that doesn't mean we can't.
Based on the emails traffic that you shared with us, they're aware of the problem. One of the emails said, "We're talking about yanking it," that this is the vendor.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, we haven't taken a vote, but we're all in agreement that those bins have to go. If they come in, I would be shocked at the, if we didn't tell them at our next meeting, "We're taking your license away."
I get the sense they see the handwriting on the wall, by the emails that I've sent to them.
So, why don't we suggest to them, "Look, we want you to come in to have a discussion about this, but the board is, is pretty, across the board, in agreement that those bins are, they have to go, and the end state will most likely be that they're going to revoke your license. Do you want to go through this for the next two weeks and come in, or do you want to just pull the bins, and we, you know, can avoid the problems?"
You know, they talked about moving the bins in the parking lot, which to me is just going to make it, to put them somewhere else.
Right.
It doesn't make any sense to me, but I agree with that. I think, I think send them, say, "We don't want the bins there anymore. We'll give you two, ask them to pull voluntarily, otherwise we're going to pull it when they come in front of us."
You know, what about if they move it close to the Walmart entrance?
They're just going to have furniture over there.
Yeah, but the entrance to the Walmart, somebody will go and dump it. This is the corner of the place, so they are dumping it. Nobody is there.
I still think we're still going to have people twenty-four, seven, putting stuff there, and I understand that they've come and picked it up, but not even twenty-four hours later. You drive by, and there's beds, there's, there's two chairs there today that weren't there yesterday, and then I just, I think we should just cut, cut them loose now, and if they don't want to give it up, then like John and I guess Pat said, let them come in. But I don't think we should let them stay there, because they haven't been able to keep up with the stuff that's being dumped there, and this has been going on for months. It's not like we just started having this problem.
And I can't understand why people that own the property would want it there, they want that problem.
They're not there.
So, what if, if the dumping goes to another dumpster?
But the owners aren't there, the manager of the bank would have to complain, the manager of Walmart would have to complain to the owner. It's not the owner seeing it, I mean, if it was you, not that you would have it, but if you had a bin on your lot, and people were dumping there, you would call the guy up and say, "Get this out of here." There's nobody to call up and say, "Get this out of here," because they're all renting the space. So it's an absentee landlord-type issue, you know, and to their credit, they've done, you know, they've been, they've been working with us, but it's just not working.
It's been the worst in the last two weeks since everybody, I don't know what, what happened all of a sudden, I mean, it was bad.
It's the broken window thing. You see one broken window, people say, "Oh, that's where you get rid of furniture," and now it's become the dump, and the right place to get rid of the furniture.
I think Raj just brought up a great point, I know you guys were talking, but he said, I think, I personally think that we need to change the policy, because all this may do is take the people that drop at Walmart, and then go down to Surfside Pool, or go to the other one, there's another one by, on Central, I think it's Central Street, that you drive by that one, it's not in the, on Route twelve, but it has trash in it when you drive by that one, too.
I think the one on Central Street is gone, Duncan Mills?
Yeah, I believe they, well, they were last time I saw them.
They're gone. It's gone. They were two there.
So, there is still one at Surfside, so I'm just saying, I think part of this is we need to look at the policy, if we're going to keep them in town at all.
Let's bring that, let's review the policy for the next meeting also, and, but I still think, I agree with Siobhan and Pat about, send them a letter saying, either take it out voluntarily, or we'll revoke the license ourselves, that's my opinion.
I could just say, our past practice is, before we remove a license for anything, we invite the group to give their side. I think that's only fair, and why should we change precedence on that? You know, that's how we've done it in the past. Invite them, I don't know how, if you want to word it the way they said, that's fine, but I think we should give them a chance to come in.
All right.
I mean, yeah.
So we'll get them into the next meeting.
And I, I think we've been giving them plenty of chances. I know we haven't done it in the past, but maybe this is one way to also get other people's attention that have them. I'll go along with it, Chris, to have them come in, but just because we've done that in the past, I just question if this group in particular is just kind of ignoring it and just waiting for Nancy's calls or Anita's, you know, calls.
No, but what, this is the bins, but the licenses are endless.
Right, I get that.
So what about when we have a license for, I don't know, gaming machine? Are we just going to pull that one, or are we going to invite the group like we do? This is one portion of hundreds of licenses.
Is this, is that a public hearing?
What you did was, you wanted to get a permit, so we could issue permits for donation bins. Remember, we didn't have anything? Right. And then what we did is we identified all the permits, and we had everyone come in, and what we did, we gave them a license to be a vendor of secondhand items. They got a vendor's license, and they also got a donation bin permit. There's two pieces to this. There's not a policy, but the permit is very clear, it has to be ten feet from the side of the road, and you have to make sure that all the contents are in the donation bin, not around the outside of the bin.
Okay, so we'll see them...
So right now, there's no policy that says, "What we do on this?"
It's clear on the donation bin permit that they fill in, yes.
So, one thing that I thought of, if we end up keeping them, is putting up, putting a fee, a fine, that's, again, we would have to change that.
And if you did have, you need to make a bylaw, and you need to tie it into non-criminal disposition, and then you have to designate who's actually going to go out and write the tickets, and then every day, the issue exists, they get fined.
They get fined, just like some of our other licenses.
We could do that at town meeting.
Yep.
If you chose to continue this.
Unless we get rid of all of them.
And that was going to be what I was going to say, we're addressing right now, obviously we're addressing the Walmart bins. I would rather not go down the road of implementing fines and a bylaw, I would rather just say, "You know what? It was unsightly, we started a permit process, and we lowered the number of bins to eight or ten, or whatever we have in town. It's still unsightly, it's not working, you can't have bins in town anymore, if we're going to go down that road." I don't want to be...
So I guess the way we do that, when the licenses come up next year, which is January, we just don't renew, instead of calling them all in.
Exactly, we would let them know that the board's, their process is going to be non-renewal on any of the licenses, but give them, you know, heads up.
Yeah, I think that's...
So we'll have them for the first meeting in September.
One, one other thing, the DCR was just here, just so the public knows, there is a place where you can get rid of used furniture for free.
That's right.
You go to the recycling center, these bins are not the recycling center, these bins are for clothing that's going to be, clothing and books, that's what those two bins are for, clearly marked on those bins. So you go to the recycling center when it's open, they'll take your, your furniture, and it will get recycled if it's, if it's usable, and it'll get to people that can use it versus the, the people that are collecting clothing and books are probably having to dispose of them and, and pay for that. So, please use the recycling center for your, your furniture-type items that aren't designed for the bins.
And I agree completely, but we're saying that those are town residents, and we, that's the only people that can use that recycling...
That's true.
...a town resident, so, we don't know if that's the case, no idea, so...
So we have our action plan on that. All right. Anything else on that? Town administrator report. Ken, Anya?
Okay, thank you. I wanted to give the board an update as to where we stand with the I N I study. As you may recall, the DEP was mandating that we do an infiltration and inflow study of our sewer system to see if there's areas in town where we are getting water into our sewer system. And we did work with DEP to get them to agree that rather than pay the hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to, to do the study through metering, that they would allow us to do a multi-year plan over a ten or, or higher year period. So we've been working with Weston and Sampson to look at the data from our pumps and our meters. We do see that we do have a few areas in town where there shows potential of some infiltration into the system. So Weston and Sampson is pulling that all together, and at this point, it looks like they're going to be recommending that we suggest a twenty-year plan. So the twenty-year plan would be involved, year one would be developing a detailed GIS So the twenty-year plan would be involved, um, year one would be developing a detailed GIS plan of the entire sewer system. Year two would be to do a, a full inspection of all the manholes within the sewer system. And then, starting in year three, we would start doing the inspections of the system through cameraing, which we've talked about in some detail before. Um, so I just wanna let you know that Weston and Sampson is approaching in that vein. They'll be coming into our meeting in September to present a draft plan to the board. Uh, we're looking at the potential of about seventy-five thousand in year one and two for cost, and possibly as much as three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, in the remaining years of the plan. It really depends on the degree of infiltration with each segment of the system as we, uh, do the actual cameraing and inspection. Um, we're taking all of this information and we're putting that into the database for the sewer rate study that's happening concurrently. And so we're making sure that any costs, estimated costs for the INI work will be addressed within the sewer rates.
Ania, on that, can you ask them, for, when they, they come to present it, for a cost analysis, if there is no infiltration? This ain't up to three hundred thousand dollars, well, I'm looking at a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars now versus millions over the course of twenty years. Uh, I'd like to know, what, what is the yearly cost of inspecting one-twentieth or one-eighteenth of the pipe system?
They will have that all detailed out.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Also, I wanted to give you an update as to, um, looking into this possibility of the regional animal control. Um, as you know, we had, our previous animal control officer has retired. Uh, we do have our assistant animal control officer, Steve Jones, who's helping us. And we, um, are trying to find a group of communities, uh, to develop a regional animal control program. Um, I have been meeting with towns in the Rutland area, and tomorrow I'll be meeting with towns in the Shrewsbury area to try to see what we can pull together. Um, I do think that we'll be able to find something that will work for us, um, that will help us, you know, increase the availability, um, and keep it at a reasonable price. But in the meantime, I'm asking the board to approve a temporary mutual aid agreement with Rutland, uh, with their animal control officer, just so that we have backup coverage until we can get a, a full regional agreement into place. Um, Steve is doing a great job, um, but he does work a full-time job and he's not always available during the day. So Rutland has agreed that if we approve this mutual aid agreement, that they would send over their full-time animal control officer to help us when Steve Jones isn't available to respond. So I'm asking the board to, um, approve and sign that agreement.
Just in, I'm sorry, in regards to the cost, it says that each town will handle its own cost, but when we call Rutland to come, when our person's not around, is there some type of system that will...
So they're, under this mutual aid agreement, they will not charge us if they respond to a call for us. But the same, if they call, Steve may have to go and help them once in a while as well. So we would pay for Steve's time, they would pay for their animal control officer's time. It's yet to be determined what the regional...
Down the road, we may, okay, okay.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. Um, how, any idea how many calls that this person, that Steve gets now? Do we have any idea how much activity is there?
We average, um, about a hundred and forty calls a year.
Okay.
So, um, and that's, you know, that's a variety of different calls. It might be just going to see, check for a barking dog, um, you know, a variety of different things.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, we're, that's quite a bit less than some of the communities around us.
Right, that's what I was saying.
But it's quite a bit more than towns like Boylston or Berlin. So we're trying to, you know, see which communities might be the best fit for us in terms of combined number of calls to put together the best group for a regional agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know how many Rutland has on a yearly basis?
We do, I don't have that information in front of me tonight, though.
Any other discussion?
Do you think we'll save money when you legalize, rather than hiring a animal control officer?
To be honest, I think, Raj, that, um, it won't be a savings of money as much as it will be an improvement in service. Um, we, what we would likely get is a much better, um, kenneling of dogs and processing of paperwork and such, when we have, um, access to both the full-time and part-time animal control officers. Um, you know, with the kennel that we have behind the DPW, you know, truly isn't as fitted out as best it could be, um, for the safety of the animals that are held there. So I really do think that a regional system would provide us much better service for the price.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh, we also are working on the Complete Streets prioritization plan. Um, we did have the prioritization plan developed, uh, with the assistance of CMRPC, and that had been submitted to MassDOT for approval. Um, but we did get some feedback from MassDOT that they didn't, um, they wanted us to put in some edits to the document, um, that had been submitted. So, um, Butch Jackson, our DPW director, has worked with CMRPC to make those recommended edits to the plan. Um, and what we're asking the board tonight is to approve the plan as amended, to allow us to go ahead and, um, be ready to submit a grant application by the September first deadline for the first two identified projects. And those would be projects four and five, the first two projects that would, um, require tier-three funding under the Complete Streets program. And it would involve, um, Goodell Street, construction of new sidewalk to fill in existing gaps in the downtown pedestrian network, um, providing safety improvements for pedestrians, um, provide ADA accommodations and improving, um, access to the recreation areas. And then Newton Street, construction of a new sidewalk to fill in an existing gap in the downtown pedestrian network also. And those two items would be, would basically, um, equal the amount that would be allowed under the annual tier-three funding grant, and we propose both of those to be completed in FY eighteen.
Can I ask you a question? The Newton Street, this is, we, the, through the chapter ninety, ninety money, we are paving and making...
This is, what, what we have on the prioritization plan is separate from the chapter ninety project that you've already approved that's going out to bid.
So, but through the chapter ninety, the sidewalks will be there, right?
No, no, not for this section. I wish I had the map in front of me, Raj, um, but this is a different section than what, than what is being done with, with chapter ninety.
Do we have any indication?
I think chapter ninety money, from the library to the Prospect Street, lower, lower Newton and upper Newton, both will be paved. The upper Newton, we'll be fixing the road, drainage, and paving. I think that's, maybe that's the one we need a sidewalk.
All I know is that the sidewalk is not part of the drainage project, so it leaves a gap in terms of sidewalk...
So, in this project, we have to wait until the, uh, chapter ninety project is done?
Yes.
If the chapter, but this, the chapter ninety project is gonna be done before this money's even approved.
I don't know what happened with that, too, you know, this so far.
We hope this will be done this fall.
All right. Do you have any indication as to where we would stand on this grant, I mean, is it a, is it a...
We do not, and CMRPC does not. We don't know what we're up, you know, against in terms of competition from other communities. Um, our score is a good score, but it's not the highest score in terms of rating of our, um, Complete Streets policy. And the scoring of the policy is one of the things that, you know, is a factor in making grant awards.
So you said our score isn't the highest. Where are we, can you give us an idea of like where we might be lacking?
I don't recall.
Okay, that's fine, right, but Newton Street is still on the books for the fall?
Yes, that's going out to bid.
Right. As we speak?
Yes.
Is that marking up or something?
Yeah, I saw that, so when do we expect those bids back?
I believe there was a pre-bid conference held today.
Okay.
I just don't know what date the bid opening was still on.
So for our next meeting, can we get an update on Newton, please, 'cause people are asking.
Good.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the, the prioritization of the Complete Streets.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I also wanted to give you an update as to where we stand with the employee compensation plan study. Um, you're aware of this to some degree. Um, over the past few months, we've been gathering data from our other comparable communities as were determined by DOR, um, pulling together wage data, uh, so that we can compare the wages we pay for our various positions against those other comparable communities. And what we're finding is that it's very hard to ensure that we're making true apples-to-apples comparison because most of our job descriptions are much older job descriptions, which are not true reflections of the job that's currently being done. So in meeting with the personnel board, we determined that what we really need to do is to update all of our job descriptions before we go too much farther with the compensation study. It makes no sense to go all through all that analytical work with a compensation study, not having accurate job descriptions in place. So, um, unfortunately, the comp study is on hold for a little while. Uh, we're actively now meeting with, um, department by department to review the job descriptions and make those necessary edits. And, um, once the personnel board has approved those updated job descriptions, then we can pick up the compensation study and work on it again this winter. I had hoped that we would have, um, the results of the compensation study ready for October, if we needed to make any adjustments in some of our positions. And unfortunately, that means we have to push that off into the spring town meeting. And that's it for my town administrator's report.
Thank you.
I don't wanna go back to the, the bins, but there was one thing I wanted to mention, just to let the residents know, from what we've learned, these are not charity bins. I don't know if any of them in town are charity bins. They are, they're all for-profit bins. Um, so I don't know if there, is there one at the church?
Yeah, at the Catholic Church.
That falls underneath our, our, our license?
They do have a, a permit, but it is a nonprofit.
Yeah, so, I mean, that we can look at that, but just to let the residents know, we're not pulling these, and that means some charities not getting money. We've, we've learned that all of these are for-profit.
The, one of the guys, the, the one that, the yellow one, Planet Aid, I think?
Yeah.
When he came in...
He made it clear.
He made it clear that, that, he, what his words were, "This is the only bin out of anyone that's here that, that is a nonprofit." I, I'm assuming the Society of St. Vincent de Paul one is as well?
Right.
Um, but the other ones definitely are not.
I, yeah, so that's something we can look at down the road, too, if we talk about it. Thank you.
All right, uh, first update, we're not gonna do anything with the contract, though it's not ready, oh, yeah. Um, approval of invoices, Carol Invenic invoice number five-five-eight-two on the amount of four thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Cardinal construction invoice number six, police station project, seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
So moved, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And cardinal construction invoice number one, senior center project, seven thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I receive builder's invoice number eight, five hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
So, in regards to that, that we're there, I think at the meeting the other day, there is still some holdback to go through, um, checklist and making sure everything's done.
Right, we're holding retainage on that, so that we can, you know, we, we keep money back from the contractor for every invoice, so that we can be sure that we are holding money to make him, give him incentive, so to speak, to, um, do any checklist items that we have.
Because we're at that point now that they're looking for issues like that.
We're already starting to see checklist items.
Okay, thank you.
And just an update on the, uh, police station, the, uh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Update on the police station, uh, and meeting Monday. They say within thirty days, they will be finished. So that's good news for us, and, um, come on really good, they did a great job and it's gonna be good for the town. And the senior center, I know Chris and Raj and two other members have met with the architect a couple times, or one time?
The council on aging, the other day, is when I saw the, the newer plan of it. Very, it's, he made some changes in it that look great. So I think we're gonna go through that, and we'll bring it to the committee, too.
So Chris is, does he have a final plan, or were there other suggestions made and...
I don't think it's final yet.
Okay.
I think he's, he's still looking...
There, there were some suggestions made...
There were some ideas.
...at the meeting on Monday.
Okay.
But he's made changes that I, that I thought worked, looked very good, I believe, and were nice.
Nice.
Good to hear. All right, appointments and resignations. Concurrents on the reappointment, oh, here it is.
Concurrents on the reappointment to John Hadley, to the Open Space and Recreation Committee as the designee of the Conservation Commission effective July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Concurrents on the report, reappointment of Brenda Bowman to the Community Preservation Committee as a designee of the Housing Authority effective July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrents on the reappointment of Gary Flynn to the Earth Removal Board as a designee of the Water District effective July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrents on the reappointment of Robert Varell to the Earth Removal Board as a designee of the Board of Pals effective July twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire on Jul- June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrents on the appointment of, uh, Troy Chauvin as a special police officer, per use as detailed assignments for period covered August first, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, at a rate of forty-three dollars per hour.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna pass that next one? The concurrents on the appointment...
Yes, so the, uh, council agent does not have a dozen at this time.
No, they did not make a vote.
Okay. Concurrents on the appointment of, uh, Tony Sanders, one-twenty-seventh Central Street to the Page Board at, at, as an, as large member, effective August seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrents on the appointment of Keith Brown, fourteen Scott Street to the Parks Facilities and Committee, effective August seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Certain approving the following elective workers' reappointments. Uh, register, Mayor Frug- Frug...
Frutino.
Frutino, Andrew Harbor Handy, three years. Uh, what is the name? Uh, election ward and Neil Norm, three years. Deputy ward and Margaret Farrell, three years. Election clerk, Beverly Scott, three years. Deputy clerk, Robert DeSantis, three years. And election constable, Gerald Condon, one year.
So moved.
Second.
Meetings, invitations, and announcements, legislations, the...
No, it's the second.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just ask a question, one second? Nancy, you know how this says, or, um, Anita, it says July twenty-second on some of the ones that we did previously? Why does it, why do we go back to the July? Is that because we hadn't met on the ones, on the first year that we did? It said, "Starting July twenty-second, twenty seventeen."
So in other words, for a few weeks, they weren't on, they weren't on the committee.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it goes back to the time when the original term ended, so we need to go retroactive because we did not meet, correct?
Okay, I was just curious.
Special, uh, meeting invitations and announcements. Legislators will be invited to meet with the board during the month of September. Please send to our person updates you would like to film them to cover by September first. Yes, very, me and Jim, we'll be in both.
We'll be invited both.
Yeah. Future agenda items, uh...
Mr. Chairman? I just have one more announcement I wanted to make. Um, just wanted to let the public know that, um, we will be having some modified hours for the treasurer-collector's office for a few weeks. I believe, was it starting the eighteenth?
The last, I think it's the last week in August.
The last week in August, I think it's the twenty-eighth, excuse me. Um, we will, um, be putting that out on the, the website, we'll be putting a cable news notice, we'll send something to the paper, and we'll be having the door posting at the outgoing message on the phone. Um, the treasurer-collector is, I'm going through a, a medical procedure, she'll be out of the office for a few weeks, so we just need to adjust the hours for a short period of time. It's temporary, it's not a permanent change in hours. Just wanted to make the public aware of it, and we'll make sure that all the information about the temporary hours, um, gets out there to people.
Future agenda items, selectmen's report, sponsor.
Um, just the update I asked for on Newton Street and where we think we're gonna go with that.
All set.
All set, thank you. The motion?
All simple and done.
Second.
All in favor? Here you go, buddy. Here you go, buddy.